Test, there we go.
We will call the January ninth, two thousand twenty-four regular scheduled meeting for the Fairview Planning Commission to order. Ms. Jones, if you will please take attendance.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Magnner?
Here.
Mr. Callie?
Here.
Mr. Butler?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Present.
Ms. Schilling?
Here.
Mr. McDonald?
Present.
If everyone will please rise for the prayer and pledge.
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here today. Be with us as we consider what's before us and guide us to sound decisions through constructive discussion and debate. Give us patience and understanding throughout the process. In your name we pray, amen.
Fudge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, without any division, liberty, and justice for all.
We'll move to the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda. Second.
Callie Magnner. Ms. Jones, if you'll take role.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Butler? Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye. Do we have any citizen comments this evening?
None tonight.
Thank you. Next up is approval of the amendment, approval of the minutes from the December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting.
I've to approve.
Go ahead.
Anderson, do we have a second? Callie. Ms. Jones, if you'll call the role.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Mr. McDonald?
Aye. We have no old business this evening. Move on to new business. First item, PC resolution, PC zero one two four. Development plan, Avonlea subdivision, thirty-two point two four acres, map zero four three, parcel three one point zero zero and three zero point zero one. Current zoning RS fifteen pod. Property owner. Anana GP. Now, uh, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Magnner Williams, and with that, we will. Let staff begin with their comments.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you all for being here tonight. A little bit of a project summary for this. Michael Shamsi has submitted on behalf of Anana GP, a development plan for Avonlea subdivision. Avonlea is a residential subdivision, uh, development consisting of eighty-nine single-family residential lots, private rights-of-way, stormwater detention, infrastructure, and open spaces. The proposed land use within the Avonlea subdivision is single-family residential. The parcels, tax map forty-three parcel, uh, three zero point zero one and three one point zero zero are zoned RS fifteen, uh, planned unit development, PUD. The property for Avonlea is not located within a flood hazard area, zone X, as indicated on FEMA firm panel four seven one eight, seven C zero, one three five F. The Avonlea subdivision contains eighty-nine single-family residential lots. Four common open spaces, two detention bases, basins, four, um, common spaces totaling ten point five eight nine acres, or thirty-one point eight percent of the property within the development. Surrounding the land use, surrounding land, zoning surrounding and land use. The properties to the north across Cox Pike are zoned R twenty, one and two family residential and RS forty. The property to the south is zoned RSM forty, single-family residential. All property to the east are zoned RS forty, single-family residential, and all properties to the west are zoned RS forty, single-family residential. The land use on all adjacent properties is single-family residential. The Fairview Ford twenty forty comprehensive plan designates the two parcels that contain the Avonlea subdivision as legacy neighborhood residential medium. The legacy neighborhood classification notes the appropriate land use is single-family detached residential, and the current property is zoned RS fifteen PUD. The RS fifteen PUD property zone was in place prior to the adoption of the twenty forty plan, and the proposed land use of single-family is in alignment with the appropriate land use stated in the legacy neighborhood future land use classification. We have a couple of staff recommendations, uh, that are listed on the resolution as conditions of approval. Water and sewer approval prior to the pre-construction meeting. T-deck approval for a decentralized wastewater treatment system prior to final plat app, prior to final plat application, and all remaining staff comments to be addressed prior to pre-construction. I'd like to note that there are two open staff comments. One is for the pavement width to align with the controlling document, and the second is to denote critical lots on the application. A little bit of history, uh, to this project. Some of you have been around for a while, some of you have not. Uh, several years ago, a applicant brought this project forward to the city, and the city, uh, failed to, to appease and, uh, passed the, this development. The city was subsequent, subsequently, uh, involved in, uh, legal proceedings, and this development and the preliminary master development plan that you have seen and have been given access to over the last week was a approved document by a judge in this matter, and that is the controlling document for this development. I know over the last few months, we've had, heard a lot about controlling documents and what those things mean. Also, in that, uh, legal proceeding, it, it determined that the Fairview zoning ordinance, as it stood in twenty fifteen, was the document that we are to use to determine if this is, uh, in substantial compliance with that preliminary master development plan. That brings me to the zoning ordinance, uh, eight dash two oh three point five. This was provided for all of you to review. The final development plan shall be deemed in substantial compliance with the preliminary development plan. Provided modifications by the applicant do not involve changes which in aggregate violate any provisions of this article, vary the lot area requirement as submitted, uh, the preliminary plan by more than ten percent, involve a reduction of more than five percent of the area shown on the preliminary development plan as reserved for common open space, increase the floor area proposed in the preliminary development plan for non-residential use by more than two percent, and increase the total ground area covered by buildings by more than two percent, or involve any land use not specified on the approved preliminary development plan or the alternative list of uses for non-residential sites. If there is an instance, uh, tonight, that the planning commission finds that the final plan does not meet the test of substantial compliance set forth in the subsection that I just read, eight dash two oh three point five, or does not comply with other standards of review, it shall disapprove the plan. In the event of disapproval, a written report shall be prepared by the planning commission and sent to the applicant. This report shall detail the grounds on which the plan was denied, to specifically include ways in which the final plan violated the substantial compliance provisions or other standards of review. With that said, I will open it up for any questions that, that you may have.
Thanks, Ethan.
I have one question, if you mind.
Yes, Ms. Williams, floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. Um, so in our email, you presented us a, the applicant presented a letter from, uh, the water authority that was dated back in twenty twenty-two, and the letter articulates that it will expire within one year, so that's October twenty twenty-three, so it expired. Have they presented a new, uh, application or letter for your approval for compliance as relates to use?
The applicant has not submitted a new letter. We have been in communication with the Water Authority of Dixon County. The applicant has been in communication with the Water Authority of Dixon County. The reason this letter specifically was sent out to you is this is still the belief and the understanding that the Water Authority has, although the date does reflect two thousand twenty-two. Their, their stance on this matter has not changed in the last two years, year and a half, really, from this date.
So the applicant can't hypothetically say, because it was approved by a judge, um, that they can supersede not following up with the Water Authority? They still have to get a compliance with the Water Authority to move forward?
Yes, and that is why they have a condition of approval for water and sewer approval prior to our pre-construction meeting. They will not have water or a, a sewer or decentralized sewer, uh, system on this site without the Water Authority of Dixon County. They have to, to have that approval prior to us granting them any steps moving forward to grade or put a shovel in the ground.
Thank you.
Question about open space. Since this was before the twenty, the newer regulations on required and improved open space, it, it, from reading the link you provided, I think it's, they're only required to improve five percent, and of that, it can be a tot lot, which it looks like there is one, but it doesn't show the overall percentage of dedicated space to improved open space. Do we know what that percentage is?
For clarification, I think the five percent was they can't deviate, correct, from the judgment approved development?
That was correct. They cannot deviate or drop it less than five percent decrease. Their total percent of open space on this site, the total site acreage is thirty-three point two nine seven acres, and the total percent of open space is thirty-one point seven.
The, no, what I was referencing is on page or article eight dash twenty-nine, number four, part A, um, a minimum of five percent of the gross area of every residential PUD should be devoted to improved recreational open space. So the only area on the new plan I see that's dedicated to improved open space is a, is a tot lot, which is between lots fifty-seven and fifty-eight. But I wasn't confident that that represents five percent.
Mr. Chair, is there a representative for this project here?
Yeah, if there's anyone representing, the applicant would like to join us if you have any insight or would like to add anything.
I think.
My apologies, I should have asked you to come up a minute ago.
Clarify some things, I guess.
Introduce yourself to everybody, and if you have anything like adding, then we'll come back to this.
I'm Heisen, I am the, uh, unfortunately, I don't have the exact calculation at my fingertips. Call my engineer and see. I don't know if it's just the tot lot, or we've got some open space.
Sure, it's just improved open space. So anything, and there's a list of what the improved can be, which is tot lot, or there's.
Walking trails or anything like that?
Um, well, from the old regulations, it's different. Mini parks, it's mini parks and tot lots, neighborhood parks, recreational buildings. So there's, there's a whole list, but now it's, now you can pick from like a playground or a walking trail, or it's more defined.
While staff is looking at, since you brought open space, I had a couple of concerns regarding open space myself. So if you look on the, I don't know if we have it to show as a visual for those at home and those in the audience, but there's, the plan that came with the judgment shows down at the end where the cul-de-sac is, I believe it's lot. I can't remember off the top of my head. The one's down at the very backside of the subdivision. They were labeled playground and park.
Forty and forty-one.
The unfortunate thing, the judgment didn't come with any level of clarification on the percentage or the size of those locate, of those two pieces that were identified as the playground and the park. So when it comes to one of the requirements that, for approval, conditions for approval, I should say, is that there can't be any reduction in the amount of open space and improved space that came with the judgment. By having not an idea of what that actual space was, it's hard to compare that to the current plan. Cause now that current plan has changed to where there are lots now in the space where the open, the, uh, the park and the, um, open space was originally, originally said. If we had that, I don't know, do we not have that, Ethan, that we could put on the screen? Is there any way we could get that up? But if you look at it, the eye test wise, it looks much larger. I mean, I, just based off the size of the existing lots that are on the new plan, it would, I would say it's just under two acres. Where then you look at the current plan, that space is gone. You now have the tot lot, which I think roughly it's not, I don't even think it equals a quarter of an acre. I would say eight thousand square feet, maybe eight, two, based on the lots to the left and right of it. And then you have up by Cox Pike, a narrow strip where there was originally houses on the judgment. Those have been removed, and now that is considered open space. The definition of open space, if you give me a moment here. Definition of, uh, common open space per the zoning regulations prior to the two thousand nineteen, which is what we were asked to work off of, is a parcel or parcels of land and or area of water within the site designated, designed, and intended for the benefit, use, and enjoyment of the occupants of said development. When I look at that narrow strip of land, one, I think it's like point six acres or something like that, so I still think it would be less than what was originally specified on the judgment development plan. But it's a strip of land right next to a busy road. I think you could make an argument that when the park was down at the end of the cul-de-sac, at the back end of the development, it's an area where kids would probably go and play, play with their dog, whatever, and then feel pretty safe about it. Narrow strip of land running along Cox Pike, I don't know if you could, I think it'd be relatively easy to make an argument that that's not, uh, the same level of use or even intended to be an area where you would get enjoyment out of. Then I look at, I notice on this, on this particular one that's on the screen now, that north side little pocket there of green space, I think is listed as common space. Now, I don't think it's improved, but it is denoted as common space. However, when you look at the judgment one, it states that that was the location of the proposed drip field, which if you read the subregs, it specifically calls out, I mean, I can read this if you want me to, but it specifically calls out that drip fields are not to be included in the calculation for open space. So for me, it gets into the situation where I understand that, you know, there's a judgment for this to come, and that most likely will happen. However, I think we should at least try to produce a product that falls as close to possible of regulations that we have in place, and I just question whether or not that open space is being met, or at least to the standard that we expect it to be.
Improved open space?
Improved open space, yes. Well, it's both open space and improved open space in general. Yeah. But that's my concern. I don't know if staff, if you can speak to that. It's hard because, like I said, the judgment doesn't have any specific sizes as to those two pieces on the backside of the property that were stated for the playground and park. Uh, it's just, when you look at it with your eyes, it, it looks quite a bit larger, and I would say it has shrunk into this one. To be fair, I think there's also an open space denoted where the mail kiosks will be. But again, I don't know what level of enjoyment that brings to the table.
Well, the only other thought, I don't know, it depends on. The, the intention was to get the tot lot centrally located, obviously. And, uh, make better use of a cul-de-sac, but I'm wondering.
I don't know if I can, as far, maybe, potentially, I don't know the, the topography of the property, if that's usable, I, I'm not sure. I, it's just, I don't know how everyone else feels, if that's something that you would need to make adjustments on your plan and then bring, bring back before us a later date for consideration. It's hard to say whether or not you're meeting the requirements, because I have no idea what the size was before. I mean, do you understand?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm being clear on that?
Right.
Again, if we had the, the judgment development plan, uh, it's just very vague. There's just no, I have no idea what size it is. I mean, you can look at the four or five largest lots there on the backside. And those, that was, that was all parks and, and playground.
Well, the average lot size has increased a little bit from the original plan, so one, it's easy to, to think that the open, the improved open space went away to make room for larger lots, probably. I also, and maybe I just missed it, not seeing where the, um, step system is going to be located.
Schulist, if you look to the plan, e- east, next to the detention pond, and it was provided for you, that'll be right next to the detention basin number one.
Got it.
To answer your question about open space, um, there is a open space requirement for this development. It would be one point six one two acres for their five percent. With that, what the tot lot technically is, I know it's not one point six acres.
I would, it's like guesstimation of like eighty-two hundred square feet, maybe?
The alternative options for mini parks, tot lots, neighborhood parks, recreational buildings, pedestrian open space system, walking trail for another term. Minimum width of all portions of the system are twenty-five feet with a paved surface of five feet. And specialized facilities such as a golf course, which this does not have the space to have golf. Those are the alternative options for improved open space within this.
I'm sorry, Ethan, you can do a five foot.
It would be a walking trail that is twenty-five feet in width with a paved surface of five feet.
Now, we're kind of bouncing around topics here, but she brought up the wastewater treatment location. In my experience, it's a subdivision, or I guess the developments that have come before us in the past, that seems like an awfully small piece of, piece of the property designated for the step system. Is that? Can you even fit it for ninety home, for eighty-nine homes in that location, one acre? I know we had a four hundred and something, and it was fifty acres. So now we've got ninety homes, and we've got one acre designated to that. I'm just not sure.
Talking the drip versus the actual plant?
So is the drip that, the, the large green area, is that still where that location will be? Cause again, it's on the judgment plan, it said drip, but on this, I think it said open area. So it was just kind of confusing on where that might be located.
Drip's there, and then there's plenty of room for the plant.
And that's all theoretical, based on what Dixon Water Authority will discover when they determine?
Whether they go with, they're wrestling with recirculating sand filters or bio-clear or bio-clear, so I got enough room to do an RSF, certainly with bio-clear, I can fit that farther than an RSF.
Again, to ensure that this development, um, is in the best position possible, we have included those conditions of approval for a T-deck approval of fi, uh, prior to a final plat application, which at that point, they would be looking to go vertical, and a Water Authority of Dixon County approval prior to their pre-construction meeting. When it comes to their, um, wastewater treatment, the city of Fairview cannot manage the Water Authority of Dixon County and how they see fit to manage their wastewater.
I wasn't suggesting that we, we, we do that. I was just questioning the designated areas, whether or not the, the size was adequate, is all.
So what number was staff looking at to not go less than five percent on in changing? I mean, cause it's not on our old plans at all, open or improved.
We felt that, um, in my opinion, uh, the move of the tot lot to a more centralized location helps the development flow a little bit better, uh, for people who live up towards Cox Pike. And looking at that included with the amount of open space that they have in total as a development blended towards the recommendation for approval of substantial compliance.
But correct me if I'm wrong, like the, if we have drip fields and some of that, they can't count it, cause they have to deed it to Dixon, right? So if his drip fields could substantially alter that?
It could substantially alter, alter the. It could substantially alter the entire count of open space, but they would still be well above their requirement of open space.
But we have no number for that?
I agree with you that there is no number. What you have been provided is the documents that were provided to us through our application process.
If I may, but, but certainly, Mr. Heisen.
They, he didn't do the court approved plan, but.
You have an engineer that should be able.
Correct. Correct.
That would be the number that you would need to make 5%, correct? Correct. I don't want to stop our discussion and I think we should. Heisen may want to request a deferral so he can get the appropriate information. That would be the common sense way. Now, I think we should finish our discussion. West, if that's what he wants to do, we can't make him do that. Yeah, I would agree with that. I don't think anybody's trying to say no. I think it's more of just, it's hard to make a determination on whether or not it's, it's adequate, one, when we, it's really just going off of an eye test. You know, you're just looking at it and trying to estimate. It'd be really beneficial to have that information on hand.
That's fine. I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I was just trying to make sure staff wasn't sitting over there looking for it, that I was expecting it because it felt like we'd moved. Clarifying, there was no answer.
Chairman, just, excuse me, just for clarity, I think there, there's two questions of, is the improved open space required 5%? And did the common open space shrink more than 5%? Because that would be a substantial compliance trigger. Just for clarification, I think there's two questions there.
Advise the planning commission of, while Mr. Heisen gets the additional information.
Mr. Chair, there's one other open space question that I have them trying to, and I'll try my best to articulate it. There's traditionally on a pud, there, you either have the adjoining, if you adjoin a parcel with a larger zoning reg, you would have to increase the size of that. Or we will see a common open space, like a 20-foot strip between the lots. I feel like this, this piece used to have it, the old plat has a, has a line. It doesn't delineate what that line is. But the, the old zoning regs don't specifically speak to a size, but it speaks to provide buffering between new development and surrounding properties. And then the new regs go on to add 20-foot or so. But so traditionally, we would see when there's a pud with smaller lots like this, when it adjoins the R40 parcels where it kind of does in the, find my directionals. I think that's like, on this plan, it would be southeast. Yeah, plan south and then the, to the east. Where it joins those R40 parcels, we would usually see an increase in lot size or we would see a buffer that would be owned by the HOA that would create a buffer transition area. And staff may be able to tell me if it wasn't required or not. But I feel like the old court plan, well, and the new plan for that matter, has a 10-foot call out there, but it doesn't call out what, what that 10-foot is or what that 10-foot's doing. If it's owned, is it owned by the HOA? Is it an open green space?
The 10-foot buffer, I do not. I can get that answer.
I think the spirit of the zoning ordinance would be to create some kind of spacing between a high-density pud and the, and the R40 surrounding adjoining parcels. And so traditionally, every pud that I've ever seen would have a 15-foot, 20-foot buffer or so. Where the touches, where they join, like the other parcels, they don't go all the way to the property lines.
It just needs to be a 10-foot buffer?
I think you should confirm with Ethan, but the, the new regs speak to 20-foot, the new regs. The old regs just say, provide buffering between new development and surrounding properties. And then there's another one talking about buffer both internal, external activities from ejection or conflicting characteristics associated with such uses. So traditionally, when you have larger land uses or density uses, you would, you would have some kind of adjustment to where you don't have your smaller lots directly backing up on the property line to the R40 surroundings.
Right. No, I'm familiar with some of that.
Vice Mayor Butler, in, in the plan that is on the screen currently, northeast open space area does have a line type that is shown that shows a 10-foot area. It does not designate it as a buffer, but looking back at the controlling document compared to what is on our screen today, those lines are in the exact same location showing a 10-foot area around the entire development.
But there's no call out of, what is that 10-foot? Is it HOA owned?
I concur with you. Big two is within the open space, those are all HOA owned.
Right.
We can put our heads together and figure out what makes sense.
That's good.
Are there any additional questions from the planning commission?
Point I've requested a deferral that gets some of these back to you.
Yeah, I think that would probably be, be best, yeah.
Yeah, then so be it. That's fine.
Do we have to vote on it if the applicant requests?
Yeah. And if I might please, I believe I had a motion for approval, so we, we need to amend that motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to defer?
Second.
Callie Schulitz, the motion to defer. Is there any discussion?
I think just for clarification, we're looking for improved open space. Does it currently meet, what was the old common open space? Did it shrink by more than 5%? And then the adjoining parcel buffer, is there anything else that's missing? Make sure, was our discussion?
No, I'm just assuming the motion is deferred for 30 days for the planning session. Is that correct? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Or at the request of when the applicant's ready or something?
Yeah.
I didn't make the motions.
I made the motion.
Does staff and the applicant feel that 30 days would be adequate enough time to get that sorted? Okay.
For 30 days?
Thank you. Mr. Jones, if you can call the roll, please.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Schulitz?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Magner?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
That will do it for the new business in this meeting. We'll move on to bonds and letters of credit. Number one, Goodwin Farms Reclamation Bond Release. Item two, Goodwin Farms Performance Bond Reduction, Item three, go ahead, sorry.
Robert would like to speak on some.
Oh, sure. Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Robert.
I was okay with you reading it. That's totally fine. Yeah. I was just gonna do.
Moving along.
Yeah, I hear you. I was just gonna do the same thing, just read the bond amounts. Obviously, the reclamation bond is released when we get a performance bond. So Goodwin Farms now has a performance bond and it was reduced from its original amount to 509,183. You also have documentation showing such calculation for all of these. And then you have Cedar Crest Town Homes. We, we set a bond, a reclamation bond in the amount of $2,032,294 and a performance bond amount. Looks like there might be a typo here. Let me confirm this real quick. Come on, Ethan. My apologies. I know we're all trying to get back out in the snow. Performance bond amount, $4,410,132.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports, starting with Ethan in planning.
E, I have some pretty exciting things going on in our planning department. We're working to get IDT fully functional to the best of our ability and working to clean up a few document items. And then we are planning in February to have a builder, contractor, developer summit to go over those items with everyone who comes in and applies. Hopefully, you will see some changes and maybe some better documents and information on IDT in the coming months. Making sure that applications that come in, I would like all development plans to look fairly similar. All master development plans, all rezonings, anything that comes to you, a little bit more standardized in form. And then we also have a RFQ for our zoning ordinance that will be going out by the end of this week, soliciting quotes for preparing a new zoning ordinance. That's it.
Tom, you got anything to add tonight?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that voter to vote Thursday for the open commissioner spot, you can vote at the Rex Center from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Or you can vote in Franklin at the election commission. But just wanted to make sure. I got that out one more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Broadbent, anything from engineering this evening?
Nothing for me. If you have any questions or if you have any feedback for me, always welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah, just briefly, I, I think this meeting marks my one-year anniversary with the city. One year ago, it was night and day difference from where we're, where we are today.
Amen.
Ethan really gets a lot of credit for coming in at a difficult time and really taking ownership of the department. Lots of exciting things happening under his leadership.
Great job. Curtis and his group are, are doing fantastic with engineering and their engineering reports, and I feel like we're really on target. Ms. Jones continues to do an excellent job.
This is overseeing staff and I think he's doing an excellent job. So I just feel so much better about where we are than where we were a year ago when I felt like we were scratching along, trying to make motions and have a, have a good meeting. And now our meetings are clear and concise. We've had a much better discussion even tonight. That's, that's the kind of discussion that helps not only the city but making sure that the projects are really high quality. So who is the, who is everybody?
Impressive change in the year. Mr. Magner, we'll start with you.
And I, Happy New Year.
Butler?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll just echo Mr. Carter. Thank you to staff and providing us with all the documents. I'm very excited about RFQ for zoning ordinance. So thank you for Ethan freeing that ball rolling and pushing on it and the rest of the staff. And same thing, I thought there's great discussion directly in zoning ordinance tonight. Last month, we've had some very in-depth discussion, so it seemed good to hear. Go vote. Thank you.
Mr. Callie?
Just to thank you to the staff and congratulations on your one-year anniversary and a Happy New Year.
Ms. Schilling?
Just Happy New Year too. And remember, I lived in Boston for 20 years. If it's snowing too hard, I can make it.
Mayor Anderson?
Happy New Year to everyone and Ethan, you were saying something about the summit in February. Would that be before a meeting? Are we going to make a special date for that or?
That will be.
Have you thought about it?
That has, the date has not been set yet. It will likely be during the business day. And y'all are welcome all to attend, but the intended audience for that is the applicants who will be applying for building permits or projects, the builders and developers, to make sure that we are all on the same page with how they are to submit their documents to our office so that we can review them the most efficiently.
And do you have an idea of who is going to be invited to that and how will they be invited?
It will be every builder and developer currently that is working inside the city of Fairview. They will all be phone call, email. We're in pretty good constant communication with just about everybody who is currently working inside the city.
Thank you. So, yes, excited about the RFQ for our zoning ordinance that is going to really help a lot to clarify things. And I remember a year ago, Mr. Carter, when we met and I want to say that I've never met an attorney who is more helpful, willing to talk to anyone on the board or any staff at any time and never makes you feel like you're wasting his time. I have, I, I remember when I first met you, I was so excited and you have just been a great asset to the city of Fairview and I appreciate all your hard work, appreciate all the hard work. Glad to have Griggs back on board. They were on board when I was on the planning commission a while back. They know our city like the back of their hand. I know that Ethan and all of the guys with Griggs have, you know, had a lot to uncover, work through, try to just reclaim this department and move it forward. And I appreciate everything you've done because I feel like the planning commission is better prepared to make their decisions with everything you bring to us. So, and also with Tom and Rachel, y'all do a great job, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I have to grieve everybody. I just wanted to. Thank you for giving us the tools to make the right decisions. You know, decision makers are, can be very popular people, but they're people that are necessary for growth and future growth. So I thank you guys for that and thank you for the board and Happy New Year as well.
Thanks, everyone, for your hard work in preparing us well for these kinds of meetings. Random question, and I know I've asked this before, but I am forgetting the answer to it. What is the timeline for TDOT and their improvement of Fairview Boulevard, both right here and then at Cumberland? Can of worms?
TDOT released a 10-year plan in the last few weeks and many of our disappointment, one of our projects was not on that 10-year plan. That is the roadway widening between. Mr. Butler, you may be able to assist in this.
When the 10-year plan came out and Fairview did not have any projects listed, I, I called everyone and anyone very frantically scared. They said that the improvements to Cumberland are already slated, already started. It's not on the 10-year plan. It's not on the 10-year plan because it's a smaller project, that that has been funded, designed, engineered. They're in right-of-way acquisition right now for that Cumberland intersection. They have already acquired right-of-way for the sidewalks projects. That's from Bowie Lake Road to Deer Ridge Road, so sidewalks from Bowie Lake to Deer Ridge. They delayed that project because they're waiting on the Cumberland intersection. They didn't want to do the Cumberland improvements, or do the sidewalks and then tear it all out for the Cumberland improvements. They had joined those two projects. So they're moving forward right now. The Highway 100 road widening now has to be identified, a new source of funding, and it's there, but it's pretty much fresh again, so.
Cool. Didn't mean to be a downer here.
We will, we will have a red light at Cumberland and Crow Cut and Highway 100. That is, that is on the docket, so.
That's all I got.
Sinyard?
Nothing from me.
I do not have anything to add, other than Happy New Year. Congratulations on a year. It seems longer than that. And in the best way possible, but it certainly seems longer than a year. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.